So we'll start here with just a public, general public comment period. Do we have anyone for general commentary?
Elizabeth Martin, 33 Allen Road. I have a question. I'm here for the Cemetery Commission and our chairman, Dave Richard, thought that only one of us could come or it would be an illegal meeting because this was not hosted as a Cemetery Commission meeting.
Are there three of you?
There are three.
Yeah, well, he was correct. That would be a quorum.
Right. So that is correct.
Yes, it is. It's just like...
Just like us.
But if it's a posted meeting...
This is a posted meeting.
This is a posted meeting.
Doesn't matter. You would have to post it if you had the cemetery...
You would have to post it separately, even though we're on the agenda as the Cemetery Commission.
So you would open and close your meeting within our meeting?
Pardon?
You would open your commission's meeting as part of our meeting and then close it at the end.
Okay, I guess nobody thought of doing that. So anyway, it's on me.
Okay.
Well, then, that makes this section easy. The, I'm gonna skip to B, the Public Hearing for Cemetery Rules, the Green Burials.
What about these, do you have a public hearing?
No, for Pi Town.
Pi Town.
Well, yeah, I was just, I was jumping ahead one, but...
You have to stick to that board.
All right, because it's time, okay. Well, then, we will start the Public Hearing for Pi Town LLC Liquor License. This is the Public Hearing Notice. Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June 7th, 2020, at 6:30 PM, Selectmen's Meeting Room, Henry Woods Building, 40 West Street, Berry, Mass. And opposed establishment of an all alcohol common victualler license for April Adams DBA. Pi Town LLC, for premises located at 2 Common Street, Berry, Mass. Persons wishing to comment may do so at that time. The Board will consider written comments received prior to the hearing. Jessica, no, no written comments, correct? Okay, well, with the...
I have a, I can speak for the, one of the abutters for this business. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Dairy Library Association. We own the library隔壁 next to you. And our whole Board supports your endeavors. Nobody has any objection. We just ask that your customers don't park in our parking lot simply because our insurer would not live there. Again, that's all. Absolutely. Thank you.
So then, with the applicants, feel, please feel free to come forward and speak to the Board. We only have one chair there.
Is it right here?
Yeah, you can grab that chair or grab any of the chairs from out there, whatever you'd like to do.
All right, Jessica, the documents seem to be in order.
Okay, so if you could identify yourselves to the audience and tell us what we're doing here today.
So April Adams, and this is...
Elisa Coting.
Basically, just a family-friendly environment. It's pies, it's sweet and savory. You know, we want to have beer and wine. We'd like to make a few cocktails eventually, you know, if the town receives us well, if customers receive that and are wanting more, we'd like the opportunity to expand and, you know, make everyone's favorite drinks. Not just yet. We're gonna see how it goes, but we do want to have that. You know, people want to sit and relax. We want to have an environment where the kids can come after school, after high school, and have a nice coffee, have a pizza. After baseball games, you know, the families always want to get together. We want that kind of environment, so. Live music, guitar, someone singing. That's it, just simple.
Sounds pretty impressive to me.
Very simple, yeah.
Our hours are not late either. We don't want to be a barroom, you know. It's, you know, we're closing at nine o'clock. So just a place where you have curtain boards and...
Is this your first restaurant?
Yes.
Oh, well, congratulations.
Yeah. We learned from scratch the hard way. We're there, we're two days away, so.
Wow. I see no issues in the, um, in the license application and would move to authorize the license as requested?
Yeah, so moved.
Can you explain the process at this point?
I'm sorry?
The process after this point. I know it gets set.
Yep, so I can, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
So after we, after the Board approves the license, I send it off to the liquor, or the Alcohol and Beverage Goods Commission, which is at the state level. They do their review and then they give their approval or if they need you to go back and clarify something, they'll follow up on that. And then we come back to the Board with the state's decision and the Board grants the liquor license and that's when, you know, we'll send out a review guide for posting.
And your timeframe on that, Jessica, is primarily what?
Probably, I would say probably a month.
So do you send it out tomorrow?
Yes.
Does it get emailed right over?
It has to be sent hard copy, so.
Perfect, all right. So at least we know a timeframe.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I'm being, I hope it's less than a month. I think I'm just being generous by sending a month just because everybody's kind of transitioning back into the office. I don't know what the APCC is doing for staffing right now, so. They, but I think it's a pretty quick turnover because they look at these all the time. As long as there's no, like, outstanding issues, you should, guys should be good.
Yeah, perfect. All right, thank you very much.
So we had a motion in a second, so we'll call for a vote.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on your... Definitely will.
For people getting coffee before work.
We will not.
Which time will you open?
Eleven.
One more walk in, Jessica, you and I will just have to...
Absolutely, wonderful.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Green burial.
Yeah, green burial. Public Hearing for Cemetery Rules, Green Burial.
Okay, so we have general rules as well as green burial. I have some paper here for you, but first I'll explain it to you a little. So the Cemetery Commission has been working on these rules for a couple of years. First sheet here is the old rules, which you can see from there that they were enacted, but they left too many questions unanswered. And we started out with about four pages of stuff, possible rules compiled by a previous commissioner, plus the rules from Glen Valley, the rules from St. Joe's, the rules from Shrewsbury. And we got it down to one page for the general rules. And then for the third sheet, that's the second sheet here, and then the third sheet is the separate green burial rules. So all things from the general rules will apply to green burial, but then there has to be some special rules that are just for green burial. Does that make sense so far? Okay, so the whole green burial question, we went into pretty thoroughly. I attended a couple presentations by Green Burial Massachusetts. I met at a Cemetery Conference I attended a couple of years ago, the guy who runs Mount Auburn Cemetery, which is a big giant old cemetery in Cambridge. They, they do green burial there.
Exclusively or by...
Oh, no, no. Oh, no, no. But they allow it, I should say. I talked to a couple other Cemetery Commissioners from other towns that do green burial. And I actually went to see Walter Tibbetts, who's the Fire Chief and sole Cemetery Commissioner in Shrewsbury. Poor guy. And he was very helpful. He showed me their area. They have one big giant cemetery there and they have an area that hadn't been used, so they dedicated that to green burial. It's just bare ground. And they've had two burials there. So what else do we do? I contacted the Health Department because they have to permit cemeteries, but the area we chose is already a cemetery. So Phil said, it's fine, it's already a cemetery. But the area we chose is the Jane King Cemetery, which is an old, old cemetery on Silverbrook Road. It has seven graves in it. It has a nice big beautiful stone wall around it.
Where is it located?
Silverbrook Road?
Yeah, where's that?
It's off Dana Road. Go down Dana Road about a mile. There's a dirt road that bears off to the left and it's down there.
How, how many acres is it?
It's small. It might be an acre.
Oh, it's small, really small.
Yeah. It has seven graves in it. It might be a little more than an acre. We actually have a map of who's buried there. The last burial there was in 1894.
Okay, oh, wow.
And then just to make sure we weren't digging up any unmarked graves, we had the whole area scanned by a guy who does this. And there's, are no other graves there than, other than the ones we have on our map.
Do you have people requesting this opportunity for green burials?
It's sort of a coming thing. We have actually one person buried that is already interested.
So if you wanted to be, have a green burial in Barry, that's the only place you can go is to the Silverbrook Road area?
Yes, yes, yeah. It'll only be allowed there.
So, okay.
And that's all we'll do there.
Okay.
That, that will be dedicated to green burial. It's really not taking anything away since nobody's been buried there for over a hundred years. And in fact, it's so...
Remote?
It doesn't even, if you go on Google Maps and put in the name of cemeteries, they all show up, but Matt doesn't show up.
So this isn't something the St. Josephs would allow, nor would Glen Valley allow?
I don't, no, I don't think they do.
No, I don't, but I mean, so, so if you wanted a green burial, you can't go to St. Joseph's, you can't go to Glen Valley?
No, I'm sure that's true.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't, well...
Maybe in the future that would happen?
I talked to a guy at Glen Valley, but I don't remember asking him that. I was talking to him about something else. I don't remember asking him that.
So basically, this is if a person or a family decides to participate in a green burial and they want to be buried in the town of Barry, they're gonna show up over at Silverbrook, St. James, did you tell, say?
Jane King.
Jane King Cemetery.
Jane King, okay.
Do you guys already have these rules?
Yeah.
In your package?
Yeah.
I brought them with me.
Okay, I just wondered why, if, I mean, I certainly, as one reads, it is obvious that this is becoming more of interest to more people. I just wondered if St. Josephs and, or, because those are the biggest acts in town, I was saying we're doing Glen Valley and St. Josephs. Just wondering, because obviously, it doesn't really, it requires some, probably takes less land, actually, and it requires just things that the individual has to do with the funeral director, really. A shallow grave.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, I never thought it'd be interesting to be buried in a, you know, cardboard box, but I don't know.
The point, the point of it is, is for, is because people are concerned about environmental issues. And that's how I first was convinced. I was reading some statistics about how much concrete is put in the ground every year as vaults? You know, for, you know, for what? How much board feet of wood and metal is you, just to be buried? How many millions of gallons of poisonous chemicals are used to embalm people? Which is really the real reason we need a concrete box is because of the poisonous chemicals.
Well, I thought the poisonous chemicals were something that was supposed to, if I died of, you know, any anthrax poisoning.
No, that's not true.
Yes, okay, okay. I'm not, I'm not challenging. I just thought that that's what that was for. I didn't realize that the embalming food was the...
No, it's just so, it's just so that you look nice lined there in your casket.
Oh, nice to know.
Yeah. Okay. And, you know, and you don't have to be refrigerated so seriously if you're embalmed.
Right, okay.
I mean, this makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I don't, you mentioned being buried in a cardboard box. I don't know that that sounds so bad. I don't think I'll mind at the time. When the time comes. Or something nice.
Well, Dylan and I are fine with this.
There are other biodegradable materials such as shroud, pine, or cardboard. Oh, pine, that works, a little nicer.
Well, and another, another idea, if I can stomach this so soon after dinner, is to allow your body to degrade and become part of the earth.
Well, ultimately, if you were in cardboard box, everything's going to become part of the...
Yeah, pretty quickly.
Pretty quickly.
And that's why the grade is shallower so that degradation takes place quickly. Because if you're too far under the ground, there's not the bacterial activity. So that's the purpose. And also, these graves are wider than our standard graves are three and a half feet. These are five feet. And that's just to make sure that you're not running into...
Too much concentrated.
Yeah, and the other thing is, if you buy a green grave from us, you're not buying an actual grave, you're buying the right to be buried. And they'll be, people won't be buried sequentially so that's to eliminate that problem.
So there's no stones or anything like that?
You can put a stone. You can put a stone. But it eliminates the problem, like now, in these old cemeteries we have, like Riverside and Kendall Plains, every time someone's buried or wants to buy a plot, our secretary has to go out there with a long scapula and cram it in the ground to make sure that in this spot there's not somebody already buried. You know, so that eliminates that problem because we'll just start in the back corner of the cemetery and go across. And we get to the end of that row, go to the next row, and all the graves will have corner markers. So that's...
Okay. Are these rules, are something that's approved by the Board? Or approved by you?
The rule, these rules are voted out by the Cemetery Commission.
So it's my understanding that if the Board of Selectmen, they, we have to hold a public hearing on this? I don't think we actually have to. I'm not, I'm not too clear on that just because this is also another elected Board?
No, we're not elected. We're appointed by the Select Board. And that's why I think you guys have to approve them.
That clarifies a lot for me because I thought you guys were elected.
Well, they used to be elected.
Okay.
But no, I don't know why.
No, we ran.
I don't know why they changed it.
Oh, so, so it would be up to the Selectmen, Select Board, to...
Is there any...
I'm under the impression that Mr. O'Sullivan is interested in being part of this conversation, is that right? So...
Yeah, yeah, Greg did. He said, he mentioned specifically that the DPW Superintendent wanted to make some comments, he had some concerns about the...
Did he write anything? I mean, this is the hearing right now.
Mm-hmm, this is the hearing.
So what we should do is recess until we can have a full Board?
Why? We have a quorum, you can take a vote.
Well, our Chair wants to be part of this conversation, I think, so...
You guys should we do this over again?
Well, so when the Board decides to recess the public hearing, it doesn't need to be reposted or anything? It just gets bumped to the next meeting? And then they reopen the public hearing?
We'd have to recess the public hearing to a date and time certain.
Yep.
So if we said it would be the, what, 21st? The 21st at 6:30 or whatever we choose for a time. I do appreciate the fact that the Cemetery Representatives are here and probably are saying, you have a quorum and if you're not opposed to this, why don't you vote it? And I guess this is just simply out of deference to the Chair's request to have an opportunity to comment on this issue.
Can we find out whether he's here on Zoom?
He's not.
He wasn't, he had an emergency that he wasn't able to make the meeting for.
I don't know, you said something before the meeting that he might call in.
Yeah, but he is not there.
He's not there.
Yeah, that was pending if his emergency was worked out by now. But I don't think he is.
So I move that we recess the hearing until 21st at 6:30 PM?
I'll second that motion.
I'm not, I have something on the 21st, but I can't...
Oh, okay.
Do you know, is there a different day that would, a different date?
I don't know.
Well, the worst that can happen is we can put it off to the next time. Obviously, difference should be...
We'd like to get these rules up on our, on the list.
Oh, I appreciate, I appreciate your...
We've been talking about, we've worked on this for the last two years.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate your situation and unfortunately, it's, I guess we just stalled with waiting for the Chair.
I'll call for a vote.
So, I mean, yes, yes, move it.
So then we will recess the public hearing for the green Cemetery Rules to June 21st, 6:30 PM, right here in the Selectman's Meeting.
All right, so I just made the same presentation again?
Yes. Well, I would, I would not have the same questions, I promise.
It's not too complicated. I feel like we both have a good grasp on this and I feel like it will be, it'll probably be a quick thing.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then you guys, I'll see you in two weeks.
Great, thanks so much.
I know that we're at a DPW meeting next week, so maybe we'll find out what their issues are. But they really should have been here. I mean, I do think we owe the Cemetery Commission an apology. I mean, technically, we didn't have a quorum here. We could have moved on this, but...
Indeed. Well, perhaps we could see if they would like to invite up another member from their committee.
Yeah, I'm sure they would. I think they thought they could only have one member and I think we should clarify that.
Yeah, maybe Jessica, do you mind sending an email to the, to all three of the Board members and just letting another option?
And if DPW has some issue, they need to show up.
Okay. Next, we just have some wage authorizations.
Do we take these individually or do we take them in the...
Glad to talk to you guys.
I mean, we certainly can do...
You guys don't have any opposition?
Yeah, most of them...
No, I'd be comfortable with a motion to, if you want to...
Yeah, we can do the, most of them are from the Police Chief, so we could do the wage increase for the Fire Department as an individual vote and then the...
Sorry, as I got to the door, I heard you... I heard you say you were going to go to the DPW meeting. Can you tell me when that is? There's no sense discussing it without someone there to answer it.
It's on Monday at 7:00.
Monday at 7:00 in the DPW garage area? Do you know where that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seven.
Yeah, 7:00, Monday, the 14th.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. I would move approval of the Wage Authorization Form submitted by Chief Robert Rogowski for the individual Dana Stoddard.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Hear none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I would move that the wage authorizations put forth by Chief Carbone be approved for Bobby Rutkus, a part-time patrol officer, Neil LaFay, a part-time patrol officer, Jack Doody, a part-time patrol officer, for the amounts indicated on the documents that would become part of the record.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hear none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open space.
Space and Recreation Committee. Open Space and Recreation Committee appointments.
So do you mind if I just discuss this a little bit?
Great, please.
So a couple of months ago, I had gotten a grant for us to redo our Open Space and Recreation Plan and our committee that we have to kind of run this, to put together this plan, is a couple numbers short since the last time they met. I think they met in 2018, so there's some members who are just not here anymore. And so we just needed to uplink three new members and I got exactly three letters of the interest. I'm assuming that they all saw the Facebook posts online. And so I'm putting forward Joy Larrabee, John Byland, and Shad Wells as the, um, according to...
How many, how many, how many other people are on the committee?
Uh, there's five of them.
There's five of them?
And we don't have those applications or those letters of interest in our packets, is that right? I don't think I saw them.
No, I just went based off of the email that I sent you.
So there were just three applicants?
Yeah, they just said, you know, I'm interested in serving. They asked me a couple of questions about what the kind of responsibility entails and I don't have any question that... If they made the effort to show interest to be on this committee, sometimes it's hard enough to get that out of... And these are three residents who really aren't involved in any other committee. I don't recognize these names, so I think that's kind of encouraging to see some new faces get involved on a committee.
I move approval of the individuals who made application, Joy Larrabee, John Byland, and Shad Wells to participate on the Open Space Recreation Committee.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Congratulations, Joy, John, and Shad, if you're out there listening. Okay, we've got a Library Trustees' Appointment in Martha Pearson.
So who is she replacing?
She, uh, I'll look it up really quick. Kim Dawson. She resigned, so it's the Select Board's responsibility to appoint the replacement until that elected individual is turned up, which is in 2022.
Now, there's no, because this is, the trustees don't have a vote in this? Is this their recommendation?
So according to Dave, Dave Champs, who was not able to be here tonight, he said that the trustees unanimously endorsed...
So they, so they do have a voice, okay. I remove approval of Martha Pearson.
Yeah, I'll forward, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Martha Pearson. Council on Aging Appointment, Robin Kelly. I've known Robin Kelly since I was in diapers.
Okay, good choice.
Yeah, excellent choice.
Great.
Can you tell us a little bit more about this appointment?
Yeah, so Roger Courier stepped down for the Board and Robin Kelly was nominated by the Council on Aging for his replacement.
Oh, great. I would move approval.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Administrator Contract Approval.
I would move approval of the contract predicated on the information that was discussed and decided upon at our last Select Board meeting. And that was a unanimous vote, I believe, by the Board to propose that contract to the Town Administrator. town administrator. So with our appreciation for her work, and I would recommend that contract to be approved.
That was, that was your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion gladly. Any, any further discussion? Hear none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have everything upstairs for you guys to sign. I just remembered, I was like, I need to bring all that now. So don't leave after the meeting.
Okay. Cold Brook Campground Liquor License Renewal, is that perfunctory?
Yeah, it's pretty...
It pretty much is. So I'll give you kind of the background on that, since we're waiting until 7:30 for the, to meet with the Florida Selectmen Hardway. So Cold Brook reached out to us a couple of months ago, they needed to get their seasonal liquor license renewed, but they had some issues, they were behind on taxes, and there were spent issues with, like, the building and Florida Health as far as inspection goes. So we've held off on renewing their liquor license until now, they've reached an agreement with the building inspector to have a conditional operating permit, which would allow them to use the bar area.
Are they currently taxed at this point?
At this point, yes, yeah. The taxes are taken care of, we were just kind of waiting on the building inspector.
Would this current liquor license renewal be contingent upon them pursuing appropriately in a timeframe that's in line with what the building inspector says, whatever?
So, so the building inspector is going to give them conditional approval to use the facilities. If the building inspector takes away that approval...
The license...
Then the license also, you know, if they can't go inside a building, they can't use the liquor license, and obviously, there's a lot of issues if we find out that.
Okay. I would recommend approval, renewal of the Cold Brook Campground Liquor License, contingent upon the issues that need to be resolved, that have been identified by the building inspector.
And that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can...
Approve minutes.
Approve some minutes. I have gone over the minutes, they seem satisfactory to me. Have you gone over the minutes?
Yes, I have. I would move approval of May 17th.
Okay, I'll second, uh, May 17th, 2021, meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The executive session, I would move approval indicating that they would not be available for release.
So I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May 24th, this is the last one.
I would move approval of the minutes from our meeting on May 24th, 2021.
Second that motion. Any further discussion? Hear none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Do we have any correspondence?
Okay, then. Select Board reports, I would just have one item.
Feel free, the floor is yours.
I would just like to thank the DPW for their work with the school district and the library association for the Memorial Day celebration issues and so forth that sort of involved the school and the historical society and the Barry Library Association, and the DPW were just instrumental in helping us to get all of that put together. So I would just like to formally thank them for their work on that.
And the programming on the common Memorial Day was moving.
Yes, it was good.
Wonderful, wonderful. So I will reiterate my appreciation as well for all that hard work from so many people.
I should mention that the Felton Field Commission, too, who did a lot of the flag hanging all over town, so...
And I would like to congratulate the Quabbin Regional High School class of 2021.
You did.
I can't imagine being a teenager in this day and age, but, you know, there's a lot of them out there, and they're striving despite so many challenges that many of us wouldn't have even been able to dream of not too long ago. So congratulations to them.
I certainly concur with the vice chair. It's nice that you noted and represented your comments for the board.
It's been a while since you...
Officiated one of those.
At my graduation, in fact, many years ago. 2004.
Jeez, I hope we didn't disappoint.
And Jessica, do you have a town administrator report this week?
Yes, so I wanted to let the board know, we do have the annual, and everybody, you know, the annual assembly, and it's coming up next Tuesday at Quabbin Regional High School in the cafeteria, and that will be at 6:30 PM. And one of the articles that I wanted, that Greg specifically asked me to give some information about the fire station feasibility study. So the select board has awarded the feasibility study to be funded at $52,000. $45,000 of that article will go strictly to the feasibility study, and then the remainder of the article will go towards owner's project management, which at this stage isn't required, but it is highly recommended. Dr. Marshall, I don't know if you built the school? Were you a part of building?
About like, about seven.
Okay. So you understand...
I do.
You understand the public building process, and actually, for building, school buildings, an owner's project management is...
Required.
Required from the very beginning, and all other public buildings is not, but I think it would be who of us to include an owner's project manager just because of, you know, we want to make sure from the get-go that we're doing everything right. And it's such a big project to undertake that, having that resource available to us can really just make sure that we're saving money in the long run. Usually, the OPM services will pay for themselves in what they can save. So the Fire Station Building Committee chose the Gallant Architecture Studio, which they are renowned for public safety in fire stations, building across the country, but they're located right in Cambridge. So we're looking forward to working with them.
Good.
Excellent. Any...
Just for the public, what will be the requirements? Will there be social distancing at the meeting? Will masks be required or not? I just think you need to make sure that the public knows, either we're socially distancing or not, or...
Great.
Folks cannot tune in via Zoom, or if they do, they can't vote.
Right, so that is, that's standard, that would have had to be a decision made by the board, I think, a while ago to allow for Zoom participation. And we can still Zoom it, like you said, they're just the people who are joining by us and can't be a part of the voting. And masks, according to Joshua Smith, who I've discussed this with, masks will be required for checking in, but once seated, follow CDC guidelines. If you're vaccinated, you can take your mask off. If you're not vaccinated, you can mask on. And then the chairs will either be spaced three feet or six feet apart. I have a call-in with the neighbors that were at Quabbin to discuss that.
Thank you.
And they have like hair purifiers and everything, so I mean, we will be breathing the cleanest, coolest air.
Well, we hope so.
I hope.
We can probably go into executive session, because we still have time before the 7:30.
Yeah, and this should be...
Okay, and with the, the chief is on the line, so...
I have to call our...
We have to call Rick.
Well, I have, and our legal counsel.
Okay. Do you want me to text Rick?
If you could text him. That'd be nice. Thank you.
Do you know what the Chief Rogauski is going to be up on with us?
As far as I know, I thought he was going to be here.
We may just come on Zoom.
Yeah, I was looking to see, I can see Chief Carbone is there.
Yes. I just, the ambulance agreement, are, is there, is this, we're still in the verbal stages of this, or is there some written document at this point?
You should have, wait here, this should be in there.